Hey, this is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chalae Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted with the Gates Chalae News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the town hall. Please silence or turn off your phones and pagers, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance for the flag.
... of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, the better God, in whose love will the liberty and justice prevail.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits at the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda and the order it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you are representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, upon completion of comments from the board and the side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand and state your name and address for the record. Please speak so that all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. Now introduce our board members. To my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, Al Hallaby, and Mike Nyhan, Glenn Hyde, David Cross, and Paul Blozier. At our side table, our Planning Board Council is Matthew Piston, our Building Department Manager is Paul Winesen-Reed, and our Recording Secretary tonight is Sandra Hewitt. First application for the night is the application of Daniel Thomas, PO Box 52, Spencer Park, New York, 14559, owner applicant for preliminary site plan approval to construct three buildings, 15,000 square foot total, with leasable space at the property located at 296 Fisher Road, RA 10 District with incentive zoning.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Shoraba. I'm representing Talc Development. Mr. Thomas, this evening. Mr. Thomas is here and can answer any questions that I cannot. I know that the board is familiar with this property. We were here back in February of this year for a request for incentive zoning. We were back in May of this year for a request of incentive zoning, and the town board rezoned this property to incentive zoning on July 12th of this year. The plan I have showing you is what we looked at back there in February, and the plan hasn't changed much at all from the one that you've seen before me, before you. We're proposing three buildings. These buildings are 15,000 square foot in size, and each of these buildings has 10 units, which is 1,500 square feet. This is a flex space development that's going to be serviced by public water, sanitary sewer, gas, and electric. This lot is relatively flat. If you, the board may recall that we had a wetland delineation done early on in this project, and we determined there are no wetlands, and we provided the town a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps that there is no wetlands on this site. The project is laid out very, very well. All the doors for the buildings and all the parking is directed inward in this triangular fashion, so we took account to try to not, to minimize the impact to the neighbors. We have no pole lighting to keep the light spilled down. We are surrounded on two sides by our G and E development, which is their substation, which is not going to be much of an impact. And then further to the north, we do have one residential home, but a majority of that is a wetland and low area. The, the project is to function as a flex space, as I mentioned, servicing contractors, hobbyists, even someone that wants to store vehicles in each one of these units. We've been successful with this product in the town of Avon and in Webster, and I see this continuing to grow as the need rises for people that have small businesses that want to get out of their house and use a product like this. The, as I mentioned, the site's relatively flat. The area between the buildings and the working area of the site is approximately 10 feet lower than Fisher Road in this area, so it kind of drops down. So it is going to be a well-hidden site, along with the landscaping we're proposing. The closest building, the western building, is about 150 feet off the right-of-way. We have a single gated access to the project. We are very aware of the owner to the north and his need for screening, so we have approximately 28 trees proposed along that, and those are spruce trees to try to buffer any light spill and impacts to that neighbor. We have, we have received comments from the town engineer. We've submitted plans to Monroe County Water Authority, Health Department, and Pure Waters. Those agencies have reviewed the plan, made comments, and are ready to sign off. That includes the backflow preventer and the Monroe County Interceptor tap that we're proposing. We've also submitted a stormwater pollution prevention plan detailing the pond and the bio-retention areas that are proposed. Basically, on the stormwater side, everything, we have some bio-retention areas that are behind the buildings. We also have, if you recall, there's a, in the center of the parking lot, there's an open area that we are going to, is another bio-retention area, and then the water will be directed to the northeast corner of the property, to our stormwater management pond, and then after that, it'll go into that tributary of Black Creek. Some questions have arisen. I think one of the main things are parking, looking at the plan, you know, and with the town engineer's specs, looking at this, that we may be looking at a different kind of code related to parking, you know? What are we doing? Are we doing manufacturing? What code are we in line with? You know, our standpoint is that the town board looked at this property and that plan and had assumed that, you know, they saw what we had there, and the parking shown that they agreed with us. And basically, what we've tried to do with the current site plan is we've increased the parking from the concept plan by 25%. And I think if we look at the town of Chalae's warehouse and storage facility code, they're looking at basically 400 square feet, or one spot for over 400 square feet. So that equates to a need of 112 spots for this property, and we show we're a little deficient of that with our outdoor parking at around 79 spots. But I was looking at that, and I can understand that there's some concern, do we have enough parking? We feel we have plenty of parking, but if we look at the buildings themselves and the units, these units are 25 feet wide, 60 feet deep. If someone was to park two cars in each of those units, there's 60 more spots. So that puts us up around 140 spots that could be serviced very easily on this site. But the site is not intended to be heavily parked. It's set up for a contractor. Let's say a mason rents one of these units out. All his crew is onsite, they need a tool, a saw, they run to here, grab it, and go back. We're not proposing a lot of that, of additional parking or people coming here to park for a long period of time like a service station. The other things that happen here is it could be someone that wants to park an RV. So he'll have one spot, he'll park there, and very rarely go to his, you know, have a need for additional parking. So we think that this site will service well for parking as it's currently laid out. I think it works well for traffic flow. And we can speak more to that if you have additional questions. The other thing, if I can just turn over the... So the proposed buildings, just wanted to give the board a flavor of what's going on. They're metal buildings. They're going to be brown metal with a black roof and black trim, consistent with shown. We also have a picture of something that's being built in Farmington currently. The buildings are, the top of the building, not including the pergola on top, is 27 and a half feet high, and the eve where the gutter is, is 18 feet high. So, you know, if you look at that and what I said earlier, that these buildings are set about 10 feet lower than Fisher Road, you're only going to see about, you know, about 17 feet of the building when you drive by. Again, these doors are directed inward into the center of the property, so we won't have any negative impacts to the outside of the property, and I think the buildings are well-suited. So each unit's going to have a 14-foot door, along with a man door. Each unit's going to have its own bathroom, and that's about as much as the building. Well, we prepared a landscape plan, as I mentioned. The plans are very detailed, but I think at this point I can address any questions you have related to the site plan.
Outside of the parking, which is an issue, do you see any issue with correcting the storm? There was a comment by the engineer, and it's already zero percent green. Is an issue?
I'm not, I have to look, I didn't understand that comment. He says we're 0% green.
Grade.
Grade?
Storm sewer is a 0% grade?
I did look into that. I mean, there's numerous sections of the storm sewer, some of them are relatively flat in bio-retention areas. That's done on purpose, and I'm sure we can work with the town engineer on those issues.
That's all I've got.
John, you talked about the parking and the different potential uses. I'm not interested in overbuilding the parking, but at the same time, you know, I don't, we don't talk about it much anymore, but like land banking, I mean, can you get the spots so that if it was an issue in the future, because I mean, if you have, yeah, it's probably going to be a variety of uses, and it's going to be ever-changing, right, depending on length and how.
Right.
But, you know, if you've got a few of these 32-foot spots, and then, you know, in a year, you need 10 of them instead of five of them, like, you just, I don't, there needs to be some flexibility there.
Yeah, we'd be very open to that if there's a need that we, that, that is, if we have a lot of open spots, we can, we can definitely take those out if needed over the time, but we're very aware of the uses, you know? A contractor with a trailer, we've kind of set those spaces up for them, and very open for that, you know? They could have, you know, let's say a backhoe sitting out there. You know, we told the town board and really said that it's going to be open storage. We also looked at some areas where they could store mulch and sand and other products on the site as well.
So is that what the, because there were some questions in there about the different spaces.
Yeah, there's a lot of different spaces to create that flexibility. Where we are proposing the open outdoor storage of materials is in the extreme northeast corner where the, that those 10 by 10 spots are, or 10 by, excuse me, 20 by 20. And I figure that we probably would put jersey barriers up if there's a need for topsoil where they can grab that and go. But we'll work with the town if there's a, if there's a need to remove asphalt, I don't, or not put it in, if Mr. Thomas feels that it's an overkill.
Well, I just, I guess the concern is we're not meeting the spaces, is it, am I misunderstanding that, based the way you...
I guess what, I guess from the town engineer, we let him speak to it, looking at the section of code that he brought up that we are deficient of spaces, from my understanding, and didn't have enough. My calculations, if we go with a 400 square foot per, you know, we need, we need, what did I say? If you had 400 square foot, one spot for 400 square feet, we need 112 spots. And right now, we show 79 open-air spots. And then if I said, okay, let's put two cars in each unit, well, then that bumps us right up to the 139 over the code. So I think the outdoor spots function under the code, but if we account for some spots within the building, we go over. So I know, I think it's up to the planning board's purview to make a decision on that, and we're willing to...
So you've shown the suites as the fact that there's 1,500 square foot suites. Are they, are they divided that way right from the beginning?
Yes, unless they're, in our experience, and I have, like, the project in Avon, there were two suites that they wanted a bigger spot. We still put the doors in, and we just basically took out the wall between them.
Yeah, I just think if I was renting it, I wouldn't rent more space to park my car inside. That's all I'm getting at. I would probably say, can I have, you know, how many parking spaces do I get with my 1,500 square feet?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, just trying to understand.
And it's such a unique, because there's, you know, for example, the one in Webster, there's a guy who's a woodworker. He's got all his woodworking equipment there. He drives there on a Saturday, you know, has fun, one spot, you know, all week, there's no one there. So it's a very, you know, flexible way to go.
Okay, that's all I got for right now.
Has an incentive been dealt with yet? I mean, I know originally you talked about this dog kennel, which did not meet with open arms, but where were we at with that?
So that's why you saw the project twice in February, it came to you with an incentive zoning for a dog kennel, and then we came back to you in May, the incentive zoning, and what the board voted on was a cash payment.
Cash payment.
Yeah.
Where do we stand with approvals from Monroe County Health, Water, Pure Waters, all those happy votes?
Those agencies, I mentioned before, they have received the plans. We've made edits to the plans, resubmitted, and then they are ready to sign.
Do you have letters to add effect or something prior to permit being released?
No problem.
One of the biggest things on your parking spots is that apparently there's no handicap spots actually shown. Have they been added to the drawing?
We've corrected that.
How many spots, handicap spots, do you end up with?
I could have to go to town engineer's comments. We just went through that today. I believe three, but I'm, don't hold me to that. But we'll meet whatever the requirement is.
Meet all the zoning setbacks?
Yeah, we added three spaces, and so that'll reduce the number by three. Yes, we do meet all the zoning, so on the sides, it's 50-foot setback.
So you don't need any variances?
We don't need any variances.
It's no storage?
It's shown numerous places on site. We can store it in the middle, in that triangular area, and push it off to the sides as well, obviously south, west, and east.
Is this one of the plans that they asked for turning movements on?
Yeah, what we did is we, we added radiuses to the pavement sections and showed those on, on the plan.
And I guess we still need to discuss the outside storage a little further, because I'm not pleased with piles of stuff.
Yeah.
That's all I got right now.
So this, you say parking an RV. This isn't going to be a storage area for people to park boats and RVs. It's, it's for active usage of the flex space, correct?
It's active uses, but that, that is a use that has happened. Someone wants to spend, you know, this is not cheap storage. Let's just throw a number out. Let's say it's $2,000 a month, and you don't want to winterize your 45-foot boat. That does happen.
Okay. And I noticed there's no access to drive around the back of the building, so there'd be no storage, I assume, behind the buildings, correct?
No, the only storage will be inside the buildings and on paved surface.
Okay. And the only spot that you had mentioned you'd store it is in that northeast corner where the bio-retention, that stormwater?
Yep, and that's a function of doing numerous projects of this type. It always ends up happening where there's a contractor that wants to put some mulch out or salt, and that has, you know, been a problem, so we want to identify that early on.
Okay. And I think we received jurisdictional determination for that. One thing to comment, which we talked about earlier, is that we have not received any of the county comments for the rest of the board to know that. So that's why we haven't seen all the comments yet. So tonight, we will review the entire project. We'll open the public hearing, but without the county comments, we won't be able to do seeker, so you'll be back next month to table and be back next month for preliminary and final, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I know you sent a bunch of documents over today, but I haven't had an opportunity to read them. You don't see any problems, or do you see any problems with any of the engineers' comments to date that you will not be able to address or...
Not at all.
Create a problem?
Nope.
Okay. And you'll be able to address those by the next meeting, I assume?
I think we went through it pretty thoroughly already and resubmitted, and the document was received today, and we'll continue to work with the town engineer to make sure he's satisfied before next month's meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just echo what Al mentioned briefly there. The outside storage is a concern. I could see if people have piles of mulch and gravel and dirt, that it could start to look like a landfill pretty quickly.
Right.
So there's got to be some sort of, some regulation around the outside storage.
Yeah, well, I think, I can tell you a little bit about Mr. Thomas and about how he keeps his work site and his home and his quality of work. He's going to keep an eye on this himself, but if the board feels that you need to put some teeth into a resolution, we'll certainly, you know, adhere to that.
Is there a, our G and E substation to the west towards the airport?
It's directly east.
Or, I'm sorry, right east.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because their access road is along our south line.
Right. That's all I got.
John, the...
Can I just go real quick?
Yeah.
On that topic, just, if you could give some examples of where you would put storage and how you would do that when you...
So right now, what we have is just east of the, of the northern building and just north of the eastern building, there's four sites that we identified as 20 by 20 sites. What we, what I've seen typically happen is they'll put concrete jersey barriers and create a three-sided figure where they would put mulch in those areas, or sand, or another product, and they would pull from those.
Got it. Thank you.
John, just one question. I don't, you don't have comments from the county yet, but I know the airport usually isn't crazy about these stormwater management ponds so close to the, to the runways.
Yeah.
Any idea?
I think, yeah, your point's well taken, but there's, it's hard to see in this map, and I could probably show you.
Just across, and right in this area, it's kind of swirly, this is tributary, little Black Creek.
Little Black Creek.
Really low area.
Yeah.
And I'll see you're impacting...
Just to...
As you know, these ponds are really not full of water all the time. We use blue just to make sure we can identify, show you what's going on.
Yeah, I understand. That's all I have.
I just have one question. For clarification, is the dog kennel a dead issue, or is that still there?
That's not an issue any longer.
It's been moved. It won't be on this location.
Thank you.
Any comments from the side table before we open the public hearing? Any questions?
Your handicap spot there, across from building 100? See it, John?
Uh, yes.
The unloading zone? We'd like you to move that so that it provides, it's dual-purposed, so that it provides accessibility to the hydrant there that you've moved down into the...
So basically, slide it east a few spots?
Yeah, slide it down to the east a few spots. That way, it's dual-purposed. It'll provide the fire department, emergency responses, access to the hydrant, and also serve as an unloading zone.
No problem.
Suite 210, will that be, will accessibility to that be an issue if you run a jersey barrier out for any sort of storage there? And that storage that you have there, you also label "snow storage." Does that impact your snow storage?
Uh, yes and yes. So we'll have to look at that a little closer, Paul.
Okay. There's no lights to the, I see you have wall packs, or at least it looks like wall packs, in the fronts of the buildings. There's nothing to the backside then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I, I think it just, maybe delineate and depict what type of materials you would store in there. The town would probably make a condition that no noxious commodities are stored. They're not dumping concrete back there. They're not dumping extraneous asphalt items like that. Also, the town may want to consider in a condition that no mortar repair be conducted at the site, because once you do that, John, you're going to get into oil separators and that sort of thing. So, just something to think about.
Yeah. If we go down that path, can I confer with my client to see if that's, you know?
Yep. I don't know if he can do that from a covenant and a lease or something like that.
Well, I think if, knowing him as well as I do, that if we had to put an oil-water separator in for one or two of these buildings, it wouldn't be a challenge with trying to capture the market share of clients.
Is it, this project, I believe it is, was there a comment that there's going to be one restroom? Is that per building or per suite?
Per unit.
Per unit. Okay. All right. Wasn't clear to me there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll now open up for, excuse me, public comment.
The only comment I guess I would have at this point is that this, the board's got to be pretty careful to put a lot of, I guess you'd call them conditions on this if they approve it, because I could see that this could turn into some serious problems, and what isn't written, isn't said later. So just be sure that you get this button down so that there's no question afterwards, because this kind of a project is, I think, fairly new to Chalae, and we are, we don't want this to be a, a learning process. We want to have this firmly set in place before we get involved. When I was here before, I remember the subject came up about, like, where was, where were this, where was there trash going to be held? Was everybody going to have outside trash containers? You know, could they repair equipment in the parking lot or outside of their unit? Were they going to have trash pickup? I can think of all the questions that came up before, and they were good questions. So maybe when you're doing, when you're finalizing this, you ought to go back and get your notes from the first couple times they were here, and that'll tickle your memory as to what we need to take care of right off the bat. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll be leaving the public hearing open for the next meeting. Any other discussion or comments or information we want to provide for John so that the next time he comes back, he has all of this feedback? John, you were aware of those previous comments about trash pickup. Maybe you could even address that. Have you, have you addressed the, the trash pickup?
We have a dumpster enclosure noted on the, on the west side of the north building as a central location, and I think we've put that there because the truck can come in directly, hit it from the front, and go back. So that's, that's the area that we see that we would, we would spell out for, for that removal. And I think that's, I can't speak to what the, what other conditions of approval you want to put on the plan.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. It's a point well taken. We do have notes from the other one. So you want to go...
John, are you... John, are you gating the facility?
Yes.
You will? Okay. Hey, Dan. Okay. Thank you.
Is it going to be a timed gate, or can people come in whenever they want? For instance, could they come in at 3:00 AM if they wanted to and...
If they're a tenant, yes.
And it'll be electronic entry, so you'll have to have an active key card of some sort to get in or out?
Correct.
With regards to the dumpster enclosure, you still need to provide an installation detail for it.
Okay.
Concrete pad, if it has one, and the fence. The note's not sufficient.
Okay.
And I think, Michael, would they have to have a size, excuse me, a size for the number of tenants they would have as well? Is that estimated? Because it's one dumpster for all three buildings, right?
Yeah, it's a...
See the one dumpster?
It's a one dumpster enclosure. It might be two dumpsters. It's at least 20 feet wide, so it might be two dumpsters in that.
Okay. Will they be permitted to dump construction materials in there, or is this just for garbage?
It's going to be more, yeah, not, again, we're not bringing, hoping they're bringing other than their tools from the work site, anything else from the work site here. They'll just be onsite rubbish.
Will that be part of, when you lease something, part of what's being told, they can't bring construction materials back for dumping?
That's, that's correct. Mr. Thomas will be, you know, paying for that, so he doesn't want to pay for more than one, someone else filling it all up. And obviously, with the lights and all this, this will be monitored with cameras and security system as well.
Okay. You got the four designated outside storage, those 20 by 20s. Will it be limited just those? Somebody else can't come in and say, I want to do it on the other side?
Um, I, we want to keep it to that, you know, to make sure we're sensitive to the neighbors and the board's request, and keep it out of the eye of the public. So if we were to modify that location, we'd come in and just come see you.
Okay, we'll do the public hearing open. If you'd like to make the request for table this to the next month, we'll go down there.
I do. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one question? I know that we talked a little bit. It's been, are we comfortable with the parking at this point? Or how, how do you guys feel? Can I provide any more information, or...
So I, I agree with the comments that have already been made. We don't want to overpark this area, and it is considered warehouse space, but this is rather unique, so I think we do have the flexibility personally. If comfortable with it, based on where it's located and the number of units you have, other than what the comment that Paul brought up with the inability possibly to get into suite 210 as a result of jersey barriers, the way it looks on the drawing. That's my opinion. Rest of the board members, your opinion before we come back next month, and then all of a sudden, we want 10 more parking spots or something? You should know that now.
I agree with you.
Good.
Do you ever have any renters that have more than two or three people on site at a time, or at your other locations?
Not really. I mean, the most congested it's been is during construction when they build these, and then after that, it seems like the, the variety of businesses that occupy them, and sometimes Not really. I mean, the most congested it's been is during construction when they build these, and then after that, it's, it seems like the, the variety of businesses that occupy them, and sometimes they're off time, it seems to work out rather well. So I can't tell you, maybe one business does have five people, but the other guy next door only has one. So it seems to work out very well.
Where's your other location?
Uh, there's, the most recently built one is in Avon, right on Tech Drive, just off 390 at 520, and then the other one's on Salt Road in Webster. And then there's a couple others that are in process of being constructed.
Similar in size?
Yes. Uh, the one, actually, this one's in Farmington, that one of the pictures I showed you. That's right off 332, when you get off the throughway on the left.
Right.
That's, that's up. If you were down in that area, you could see that.
Okay. And so the majority of your tenants are, are people that come in, they get their, their tools or whatever they may need, and then they leave for the day, and they come back at the end of the day, and there's a small office in each of these and a bathroom. Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah. One of the ones, and the Farmington site is a sales guy. He's, he puts all his samples in there, and that he comes and he runs the throughway. So he goes from Buffalo to Albany, and that's his little hub. It works out pretty good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the important thing that's noted in the letter and that we're not seeing here is it's flex space, but it's not gonna be retail, right? It's not, they're not gonna have
Right.
Clients, customers, people come in there. That's where the parking concern really goes.
And that won't be the case here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I agree. Anything else? We good? Okay. Okay.
Thanks for the extra input, and we'll see you next month.
Ted, do you want to make a motion to, or request to table this, and then we'll vote on that? John, do you want to make a request to table this?
Yes, I do.
The request will come from you.
Yes, please.
All right. Motion has been made by the applicant to table until next month. Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is the application of Cook Properties, New York, 90 Air Park Drive, Suite 400 Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for preliminary site plan approval of a self-storage facility to include A, convert the existing building to a climate-controlled public storage facility and a sales office, B, construction of six new self-storage buildings. The property located at 50 Air Park Drive in a GB district with incentive zoning. Lot of storage.
Good evening. Glenn Thornton with Thornton Engineering, the engineer for Cook Properties on this project. With me is Scott O'Keahy. He's the CFO for Cook Properties, and Brad Humberstone, he's the architect on the project with Mitchell Design Build. I never know what to bring to these meetings. If I should bring boards to put it on an easel or use the board over there. Thank God you got some pins, because I cannot work the, the grippers up on top. Yes, this, this project is basically a continuation of a project I was involved in eight years ago or so, back in 2015. Ron DeCherio owned several properties on Air Park Drive, and this was going to be the, the last build for, for Ron, a 33,000 square foot, partial two-story building that was proposed for offices. And as you know, Ron got started on the project ill. He ended up dying. He did get the building up. He did get the utilities, the water, the sanitary, electric. I don't think the gas is in yet into the building. The building is fully enclosed, but it's been sitting vacant for six or seven years. Stormwater pond had been constructed, and the primary bioretention area for the pond was also constructed along the east side of the property. Cook Properties is proposing to convert the 33,000 square foot building shell into climate-controlled self-storage. He's also proposing, as you can see, the darker brown buildings, six new drive-up storage buildings. I think we're looking at around 115 drive-up storage units, and the number of climate-controlled units in the building has not yet been determined. It's going to be developed based upon the unit mix that is leasable, the size of the units, but there will be a number. One of the first comments from, from the town engineer was the number of parking spaces required for the, the facility. We had shown 11 parking spaces, primarily to serve the climate-controlled building. Town engineer recommended 15. We have plenty of pavement out there. We have an extensive loading, unloading area along the east side of the, the existing building that will be climate-controlled. We could easily convert some of that area into parking spaces if deemed necessary. So, whatever, whatever the board wants. We just thought that 11 was more than adequate for this building. I've worked on other climate-controlled facilities, and with 110 units, we provided four spaces, and there never seems to be a deficient number of available spaces. But, as I said, we can, we can modify it as, as needed. We did receive comments from the town engineer, and just tonight I received comments from the, the fire marshal on the plan. So let's, let's tackle that. The next issue was fire access to the site and hydrant locations. The fire marshal has requested the inclusion of two onsite fire hydrants, one at the north end of the existing climate-controlled building, and the other one towards the south end of the building. He felt that it'd give them adequate hose length to, to all the buildings on the property. So that's something we, we will need to add. We didn't believe for this project that Water Authority Health Department review would be required. And to tell you the truth, I'm not sure about this, this private fire service extension. We're gonna have to get Health Department and Water Authority approval of this. Everything is downstream from the backflow preventer, so it's all private, but I'll have to touch base with them to see if they need to review the plan. So, we haven't done that yet. The fire marshal did not comment on truck access to the, to the site, primarily to the, the drive-up storage units in the, the southeast quadrant of the site. We were looking at the, the vehicle movement through that area for the, the fire apparatus, and there are some, some turns between the buildings that would be very difficult. We could accommodate the trucks if we widened the pavement a bit towards the pond, but that still leaves the problem of driving the truck, truck between the two north-south drive-up storage buildings in the southeast. So, instead of getting into all that, we think a, a better solution, and we'll, we'll coordinate this with the town engineer and the, the fire marshal, would be to take the east-west building This one here and slide it to the west. Right now, we're showing an access way through here. Maybe if we slid that over and showed the access way up here, it would accommodate, satisfy any fire apparatus movements through that area. Of course, we will need to secure easements from 90 Air Park Drive, which is under the same ownership, to do that. So that would not be a problem, and I'd love to hear everybody's comments on that. But again, we will take it up with the fire marshal, with the town engineer, to make sure that everybody thinks it's a, a good solution to a potential problem. To tell you the truth, I can't imagine anybody driving a fire truck would ever want to negotiate between the small self-storage buildings in the southeast corner. But, again, this would allow them to pull a fire truck within 100 feet of the end of the building, if needed. Other than that, a number of other comments. We did submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the project. I don't think the town engineer had time or received that, that document yet. So, again, a number of his comments were concerning the SWIP, which we believe we have addressed. What we've shown here with the stormwater management, with the green infrastructure, which is basically the existing bioretention area, and two new bioretention areas closer to the pond. We have satisfied all DEC Speedy's permit requirements for, for the site. But again, he will be reviewing that, and I'm sure there will be some more comments on that document. We've included a lighting plan, a number of building-mounted lights, eight-foot on the, the drive-up buildings. I think it's 11 feet above grade on the climate-controlled building. We're not going to have any light spill off the property. They will all be dark sky compliant, wall packs on the buildings, LEDs, low intensity. We really don't need a lot of lighting out there. The facility is, is scheduled to be open 24/7. Of course, there'll be, it's fenced around the perimeter. There will be a, a gate on the main access from the cul-de-sac of Air Park Drive. And we're also thinking it's, we're either gonna have to put another gate in the back between the two properties, or possibly just a gate on 90 Air Park Drive at the street to secure both properties with, with one gate that way. Fire marshal has recorded an oxbot on the gates, which we will definitely have. In the fire department connection, he seemed to be satisfied with the location of that. And as I said, we will be adding hydrants to the property. We have shown some landscaping. The only landscaping we've shown is in the front of the building, towards the cul-de-sac. On either side of the, the driveway, on the street side of the security fence, we, we proposed a couple of flowering cherry trees out there. And in the front of the building, towards the green area, which will be lawn, we've shown some foundation planting, some, you know, boxwoods to maintain some green and some flowers, and some grasses. Nothing, nothing elaborate, but something just to kind of dress up the front of the building. The back portion of the building will, the lot will contain the pond. Beyond that, to the south, we will leave all the vegetation in that area undisturbed. There, there's a, a gas line, a couple of gas line easements through that area. So, we have to stay away from that, but any vegetation in that area will remain. So what did I miss? Probably a lot, but...
There was a comment on the proximity of the storage building to the south of the four-story building, and the distance from the lot line, which would not give any ability to maintain that building.
We will secure an easement from 90 Air Park for maintenance of the building. And as well, we need to modify the, the stormwater access management area access easement and agreement that was granted to the, the town a number of years ago to include the expanded pond area and the additional bioretention area, and also to provide access to the, the existing bioretention that's kind of sandwiched between the back of the north-south storage building and the lot line. So we, we will do all that on the revised plans.
Just stay on building D then, I guess. So, the zoning, the note here that, from Michael Hanscom, is that the zoning code allows it. We talked about access to maintain it and getting an easement, but are you really gonna be able to issue a building permit for a building that has zero setback against the property line? I still don't think you do zero feet. I don't know. I, I just don't think you can. I'm just... Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm saying that one out loud, because I know we talked about it when it came in under sketch plan, but...
If, if it wasn't, if the two properties weren't under common ownership, we never would propose that, so...
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about that. I mean, I get it, but I still don't think you can do that by building code. I, I don't, I could be wrong.
By code?
Building code to have a building on, literally on the line without having, I, I mean, I, I guess I've always been stuck on the five-foot mark for a total of 10 feet between buildings, between properties. That could have changed, or that might not be applicable here, but...
I don't think it's applicable. Paul would probably know better than me, but the, I mean, a zero setback is allowed in this district. The incentive zoning that was granted for this project was for lot coverage. You allowed 32%, whereas 30 is allowed, so it allows 32% coverage. We're using 20, I think, 29%. It, it allowed self-storage use, and the only other one was a front yard fence exceeding six feet in height, which we will have. The security fence will be six feet.
Yeah, once again, Glenn, I'm not worried about the zoning. I get it. I'm talking about fire code. So, once again, back to Paul's comment, just, just something I saw and talked about during site sketch plan, so the architect will look at it. And, you know, the, the fire truck movement, fire truck placement in this scenario would be very interesting. But, the fire marshal's giving you the comments, and, you know, I would take a good look at that, but I would trust his opinion on that. Good for now.
On the, the moving, the movement of that one building to the south there behind the four-story and creating a different exit way, you're gonna do a truck movement sketch anyway, so to see how that would work would be good, because it is an interesting layout of where they would want to put things. Moving it over there, the only positive part of that was you're not backing out of the place. You're probably able to pull in and pull out. Moved it, so I would say just move it and see what it does to your turning radiuses and what it does to be able to get vehicles back in there, and then you could probably go from there. I notice you have a lot of snow, snow storage area marked on here, but they're not really all that big of an area. Like, for instance, on the south side, it looks like you maybe have 10 feet of storage between the fence and the pavement. And then you have another area up in the corner there. So I just, if you did a calculation, if you plowed that entire parking lot with four, four to six inches of snow, do you have enough space to show you can actually store it? I know you show a lot, but they're all tiny little spaces, so...
Most of it is going to go towards the pond, you know, and I think if we shift that building to the, to the west a little bit, that'll open up that area between the, the two buildings up in the corner. We will have an access road, but it'll be an easy, an easier area to push some snow. We envision most of the snow go, though, going towards the pond, towards the bioretention areas.
That has a fence around it or, around the pond?
No.
No? Okay.
We have, it, it's very flat slopes into the pond, one on four slopes.
I thought the lines, I just didn't know if that was a fence of some sort, a low fence or something to mark it.
Okay.
That, just take that into consideration. I want to be sure you have enough snow storage for the area you have. The other thing is I notice you have one of the buildings sloped, so that there, are these metal roofs?
Metal roofs.
You have that slope down to go to the bioretention area, but on the other, on the other buildings, you don't indicate how you're gonna remove the drained water from the roofs. Are you having underground piping? Are you gonna put it across the parking lot? How are you gonna drain the roofs?
We were looking at downspouts, gutters and downspouts on the buildings, just draining out of the pavement. Obviously, the, the buildings adjacent to the property line will be sloped inward towards the site, except for the long north-south one, which will be sloped to the east into the bioretention basin.
I don't think the town requires them to be underground in here. Is that correct, Paul? The drainage gutters? They're not required to be underground, are they? Okay. And I raise it from experience with other projects that have come in is, especially in the winter, and these roofs, it'll melt. It'll go down, the pipe drains across the parking lot. It's cold, it freezes, and now you have a, a real ice mess back there. So just give that some consideration. It's only two of your buildings. Like, again, it's not required, but give that some thought as to whether you want that water.
I, I agree with you. I don't, the DEC is very particular about how we get water into the, into the pond. They, they like to see discharge onto the surface to get some filtering, then we can run it through the bioretention. But I understand what you're saying.
This is all asphalt. They're gonna drain across, right?
Yeah. Eventually, we'll get to the, the bioretention.
When they talk about draining across that, I think they generally mean like across the non-paved areas or
Right, right.
Removable areas, not asphalt and concrete and things like that. or removable areas, not asphalt and concrete and things like that. I think that's roof drainage, snow storage. Oh, the building number four, that's pavement around the entire building, right? All the way up to the proposed site? Asphalt paving is already there?
There's no asphalt on the site. There's just millings out there on the site.
A four-story building, where you're talking about running a driveway into the storage area?
Oh, yes, yes.
And that's all paved, correct, right up to the storage?
That's correct. We will have to add some pavement at 90 Air Park to make that connection now.
Okay. Thanks. No questions?
No, nothing, Brad. I'm interested to see what the, you know, if the fire marshal's okay with the access for fire trucks. That's the biggest thing, Glenn. You know that, so...
Side table?
No additional comments?
Okay. And you, I don't know, have you had an opportunity to read all of the engineers' comments?
I did.
Any issues with...
I had a couple of evenings open, so I could... There's a lot of pages. I just told Mike before the meeting, I have no problems with any of the comments. I understand where he's going. We will address all of them. I think a number of them have already been addressed. He just hasn't seen the documents, so we will address them all.
Okay. At this time then, I'll open up the public comment. Any public comment? I will also keep this public hearing open because we have not received county comments on this, so we won't be able to complete seeker. So is there any other, you'll be coming back, I assume, January? You're going to want to come back for preliminary and final?
Correct.
Okay. So is there anything else to add so that everything is complete when they come back next month? So they'll have to come back another month after that? Okay. Leave the public hearing open, and we'll entertain your...
All right, can I ask just a couple of questions? Just to get clarity on a few things. Number one, the parking, what's the board's feeling? I mean, town engineer made a recommendation. There's nothing in the code about the number of required spaces for self-storage. We'll do whatever you want. I just, we would prefer not, I mean, we would prefer to keep that a loading, unloading zone for the customers. But if you feel additional parking is needed, we will just stripe it out.
For the storage areas, we've never required parking outside of the actual storage area. Just the ability to park a car out in front of your storage unit and have another vehicle be able to pull past it. So if two pickup trucks were in there that had to pull past, I think you have 25 feet. I think that's probably, what's the normal, 24-inch? Is the normal driving for two vehicles to pass? So I think you're probably okay there. You have this entire loading zone that you've striped, but that's going to be used for parking for that indoor. You're not going to drive into this building, correct? You have to...
Correct, yeah. It's just for unloading, loading.
He made the statement that he could bank spots. I mean, why don't you just show a number of bank spots on the drawing? So if push comes to shove and you do need them, they're just...
That's fine.
Show them already.
Anything else on the parking suggestions? Paul, do you have any here? Mike?
My recommendation for the one space for the town storage is I just researched on the unit, found two or three sites where the, basically, there were sites providing information to people who wanted to build self-storage areas and what their recommendations were to those things for the air-conditioned self-storage. That's typically what I found in the space where the town is. That's what I got.
What's going on on the west side of the existing building?
Hopefully, nothing. It's right now, it's asphalt millings with drainage inlets, downspouts from the roof, all that. That entire roof drains to the west, discharges degrade, and it's collected in the drainage inlets and piped into the stormwater pond. We're not proposing anything there. I think, Brad, all the doors will be secured. There will be no access through that side of the building.
Yeah, because if you were showing doors and so on, I'm thinking, are you accessing it that way? Is there access? Or is that a rental unit on that side? Are you taking them off the building and...
Either locking them or taking them off the building.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions before you go?
Good.
Want to make our request to table this till next month?
I do request it be tabled.
Second on that?
Second?
Yes.
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 Also, yes, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, so we finished, we're at King Park now, right? Application of King Park 2022 LLC, PO Box 170 North Chi-Li, New York 14514. Andrew Viera, PO Box 170 North Chi-Li, New York 14514, owner for a special use permit to allow the use of similar character warehouse distribution office at the property located at 30 King Road in L.A. District. And also the application of King Park 2022 LLC, PO Box 170 North Chi-Li, New York 14514. Andrew Viera, PO Box 170 North Chi-Li, New York 14514, owner for a preliminary site plan approval to construct eight commercial buildings to be leasable space at the property located at 30 King Road in the L.A. District. We can hear them together, but we'll vote on them separately and do separate, the special use.
Okay, good evening. My name is Bob Woinens. I am an engineer with Land Tech. And also with me tonight is Andrew Viera, the project developer. So we just, we have been before the board a couple of times, back in September, I believe, for concept review. And then we submitted preliminary plans in October. We were tabled to start a 30-day waiting period to allow the board to, and actually, the board declared their intent to be lead agencies. So we needed 30-day waiting period to receive comments to allow the board to do that for the seeker. Since then, we have submitted architectural elevations and plans, which the board should have. We submitted a wetland boundary determination prepared by BME consultants with confirmation letter from Army Corps of Engineers. Also, we submitted a truck turning radius plan. We submitted updated plans. And I'll just go over a couple of things that were on those plans that we submitted last month. And one was phasing. We showed the northern portion, two buildings, to be in a Phase 1, which includes the building that Andrew is going to put his business, Rochester Earth, in. And that'll be Phase 1 with those two buildings. And we'll ensure all the infrastructures there for those buildings, as well as the other phases once we get started. Another thing we did do was reduce the size of the building. So now the six larger buildings are 12,000 square foot. And the two smaller ones remain 8,000 square feet. As discussed, you know, there's potential that depending on what the clients and the tenants want, these building sizes may change slightly. Even though we do, on the architectural plans submitted, we do show the various 24-by-60 units for each building. And that's how it's going to be planned out with bathrooms and, as discussed in a previous project. We also are showing storage area, which is a large stone area in the northern portion, which will be designated for contractor storage and allowing for other vehicles, larger vehicles and such to be put in that area. We've shown dumpsters and closures for each building. We showed the loading areas that were requested by the town engineer and required by the zoning in Chi-Li. We have the gate at the main entrance, which I think we discussed last time, which will be an electronic gate for the tenants. And really, there wasn't intended to be any fence around the project, but we are reserving or saving about 50 feet of buffer area, natural vegetation and ground along the frontage and the sides to kind of act as a deterrent to anyone else, you know, entering the property, so... We did submit a landscape plan and basically showed everything that was in a, called out as a parking space to be paved for asphalt, which was one of the questions that came up last month, so... We have submitted plans to the Monroe County Water Authority, the DOT, the Pure Waters, and Health Department, and received comments back. And actually, everybody is just about set. I believe we're still working on some things with the backflow preventer for the project. But otherwise, we're in good shape with everybody. So I guess that's it. I've received the comments from new engineers, and there definitely is some minor technical things that need to be added to the plans, which I believe we can address and work that out with the town engineer prior to final signing. And so we're, you know, looking to to receive the special use permit approval and our, you know, our seeker determination and looking for a preliminary overall approval from the board, so... Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're just going to have one sanitarium, one water connection for each building?
The what?
You're just going to have one sanitarium, water connection for each building? Is that the idea?
Yes.
And then?
And then each unit will be served off that lateral, yep. So like the water line, it'll be one service in, and then there'll be like a one-inch line running down the back of the building, which will service the bathrooms.
So it's just going to be bathrooms in there, nothing else? That's the intent?
So graphically depicted, the only thing that's stone left is that 170-foot deep by whatever that trapezoid is there. That's the only, that's the only stone area left, Bob? Is that area back, the light gray behind?
Right, everything's going to be asphalt, except, you know, the area.
All right, and that, so that's going to be Andrew's business in Building 1, as we've heard? So that's going to be his storage area?
Well, it's not just his storage area. It's going to be for everyone. But that will be Andrew's building. But this is company's. So the storage area really is for the whole campus.
Okay, that's all I've got right now.
I'm in receipt of two EAF forms. One's a short form and one's the full assessment form. I assume we're using the full assessment?
We'll use the short form for the special use permit. We'll use the long form for the preliminary site plan. We'll break those up, both to seekers. So the long form, we have, we'll do the full assessment survey.
All right. That's all I got right now, huh?
What type of materials do you plan on in that storage area? Again, is that equipment storage, like Echos, excavators? What's going to go in there?
I think that's the general idea would be just your...
Your name, just...
I'm sorry, Andrew Viera. Yeah, equipment, yeah. We're not, they don't want to blow up. They have none of the concrete, or...
There's no construction equipment, though? There are no construction materials? It's going to be equipment?
So we do do emergency water main repairs and some work like that. So, of course, I hope it's all, to be completely transparent, we would probably want a small stockpile of stone for that though, in a situation like that. But we could definitely, the years interior off the area and have it leave and kind of handle some of those immediate area.
Do you, where do you repair your equipment right now? Or where do you maintain it? Are you going to continue to do it there? Or are you going to bring all that here to repair and maintain it?
To be completely honest, all of our equipment is newer and under warranty. So most of it's catfellers. So they will either send a mobile truck out and do service work on-site, or we'll bring it to their building that's a repair and they want it signed and shown. So for the most part, we just do, we create some and stuff like that. But the leases obviously equipment, if they come with like a maintenance program and everything. So we generally don't, it's for storage. They're just obviously leaving it out.
So you're not changing oil-repairing vehicles, changing out engines? It's just maintenance, grease? All right, there's not going to be, there's not going to be a repair bay inside or outside at this location? I'm good?
Nothing further, Mike?
Okay. Any additional comments from the side table?
Uh, the most typical, the fire marshal. Fire marshal had a comment. We want to add a higher in front of Building 2 in Phase 1. Okay, I don't see any problem with that.
We have one at the end, down in the middle of the other buildings, so...
Yeah, I think you have no other comments.
You good, Paul?
I think you look at this as the same as you look at 296 in the storage, doing the same thing.
Okay. I'll now, I'll now open the public hearing portion. Any comments from the audience, Dorothy? Dorothy?
I think, August 31, school girl. I would just make the same comments that I made on Public Hearing 1. Just be sure that you get everything that you want in those conditions that you put on it because what is written is instead later. But spare for one, spare for all, Drew.
Correct, thank you. Any other public comment? See, now I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the...
Second?
Yes.
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 Also, yes. Any further discussion? I don't see any conditions for the special use permit. Any conditions, does anybody see? I don't, for the special use.
Did the applicant relate where you stand with CSX? Where do you stand with the railroad, Bob?
We sent another email to them and sent in all the damage. They asked for on their claim sheet. We didn't have in October, and I have never got. I know the last... I know the last email chain, and I got into John Raymond discussing our port name in the liquid runway with a...
He's going to take ownership of it. Maybe he's suddenly the...
Another person in that with Rochester contacts. So I'm hoping we can have some movement.
Do you have any documentation on Forest Main and John Raymond? Who's taken ownership of that in the east ones he was talking about?
Yes. We received the okay from John that if we were going to submit writing a, an agreement that we may have hired a utility company to do the stakeout. He was just concerned about the stakeout, if it wasn't a, you know, town lateral, if it wasn't a pure waters lateral. And it seemed like neither the town or your Rogers wants to take it. So we can just work out that and really go with it. I believe Dave Lindsay was in on that email chain.
Yeah. Should be good.
Okay. I think we would want any correspondence regarding that and how that all pans out. Also, any correspondence with CSX.
Yep.
Okay. And how that's going to pan out.
I will definitely start copying your...
All right. Thank you.
Any additional comments? I think I have showing dumpster locations, but need also to draw a dumpster closure for each of those locations, write in detail for the dumpster closure. Might be a couple of other details, so some...
I think we've worked out.
Any other comments or discussions about conditions?
So we're going to put the conditions on the site plan approval?
Correct. On the site plan. We'll do seeker, but I wanted to start to collect some of the, some of the, other than the standard ones that I have is that no outside storage of, or no storage of naxus materials, which I think is already part of our code. Is that right, Paul? Or no? It is? So we don't need that condition?
No, I want that.
Oh, okay. "No outside storage of construction materials to include quantity on hand for emergency responses to repair work." Well, that's, is that the type of outside storage we're talking about?
I'm sorry.
The outside storage of construction materials to include quantity on hand for emergency response to repair work? Is that the type of materials you're going to store?
Yeah, that would be...
Okay.
I think you want that delineated on the plan. You want an area on the plan, whether it's behind him, to the north of this suite there in building one, in that asphalt area. You want that delineated. You want an area outlined.
Okay. Is that the only area you intended for storage, right? So, you don't know? Is there the, so if somebody, for instance, in the buildings in phase two to the, the east, they wanted to put outside storage, same type of outside storage, you have an area delineated, there isn't an area delineated for that. Can you delineate an area for that where it would fit, to show that it would fit? I mean, I think if I read Mike's comments, they have more than enough parking spaces. Is that correct? I mean, like, a lot?
What was that?
I said, based on Mike's comments, you have plenty of parking spaces.
Yeah.
So on your final plans, when you submit them, if you could delineate or show where you would be able to hit...
Sure. Just call out that area that's going to be, call out the area that's going to be used for storage.
Right. So that you know if somebody's going to want storage with a building, they're going to be anywhere that storage is going to be, because we, we would want it away from King Road, more towards the back area that backs up to the wooded area that isn't developable, that's wetlands or where the trees and vegetation are, where the wetland buffers outside of that.
Right. Right.
I know you have a lot of parking spots, so if you could delineate those areas that you would permit people to do that and then maintain that, that would, that would be where we would maintain that forward.
Okay. Yeah.
Same with, you're going to have stone storage area with equipment if you're in a specific area for material. Again, show what that would be along the back line, not the front line of the, you know, towards that stormwater management area, so it's not out towards the road, it's out towards the back.
Right. Right. And I mean, that's why we really showed the, called out that larger stone area, just because it's in the rear and it's away from everything, so.
All right. Okay. Are you going to have storage between the buildings also? Is that the intent, or is that just going to be grass?
No.
Okay. So what I'll add, there's a condition, is to delineate the location of outside storage materials. And then I added the no outside major vehicle repair other than maintenance type activity. The outdoors, no major mechanical repairs outdoors, just maintenance activity. Does that sound, does that cover the, being able to rebuild an engine out in the parking lot? Any other conditions that...
Well, we talked about the not having like the construction debris on Fisher Road. So are we going to put, I mean, is that already, that's what we need to put in there? Construction materials?
Right.
Like construction waste?
And debris.
And debris would not be stored on site.
Right. So you're just providing standard garbage, rubbish dumpsters, correct? No construction materials are coming back to the site to be hauled away from there? You do that from the construction site?
Same scenario as 296. Each one has a lab, each one has an office. Right?
So how'd you, how'd you say that again? No outdoor, no storage or disposal of construction materials? It's not, no, it's the, it's the waste products of...
Of construction waste and...
Construction, yeah.
Construction debris.
Yeah, it says construction debris. Okay. Lost away. Okay, so no storage or disposal of construction debris on site.
We want to quantify this outside storage, though I question the fact is that you could pile a pile of stone six foot higher, you could pile it 30 foot high. Where do you draw the line?
In the past, we didn't permit outside storage that would exceed the height of any building. So what is the height of 30 foot, I think? Is that right? What's the height of your tallest, of your buildings?
That'd be a pretty big pile of stone. I would say so.
But how high are your buildings? Are they 30-foot height? The peak?
30 feet.
So what did we want to do as far as the height for storage?
10, 12 feet.
What's the biggest hole you fill? If it was in the city of Rochester, it was pretty big this year. But if you're talking two 10-wheeler loads, you're talking what? Five foot, six foot, seven foot tall at best?
20 ton of stone?
So I would say probably 100 ton, which is five loads and, you know, if it's a right thing.
Yeah, spread it out.
We want to keep it below 10 foot? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 100 ton sounds pretty reasonable.
Whatever, however high, like our loader would stack it without having to climb on a pile and then like elevator it to even higher.
Side of a truck is probably 12, 10, 12 feet, right? Side of a dump truck.
The side of a dump truck.
Yeah. Would he have to come back in here if for some reason he say rented out a snow removal contractor who wanted to store salt over there? And a lot of those things are built with those jersey barriers with a canvas top over them that could exceed 30 foot. Is that something that he'd have to get a revised site plan on?
Well, he'd have to come in for a building then, or, I mean, that would be a building, wouldn't it? Those buildings they build, like, you're talking about what you see on the thruway when you get on, they got the big cover over it.
Temporary.
Stick it wicked. Because that's a temporary storage. You count that almost as a temporary storage, which the code only lasts for six months. They're not taking it down in the summer.
Right.
Salt's going to stay there.
I don't know what it is, but there is a trigger with a DEC on a quantity of bulk storage of salt without a drainage plant. So I would stay with that.
All right. All right. So I have that, no, or outside storage of construction materials will not exceed 12 feet in height. Why don't we start with, why don't we start with the special use permit? So for the, the special use permit application, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker and based on evidence and information presented at the meeting, determine the application be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. And I do not have any conditions for the special use permit. So for the application of King Park 2022 LLC, PO Box 170 North Chi-Lin, New York 14514, Andrew Viera, PO Box 170 North Chi-Lin, New York 14514, owner, for a special use permit to allow the use of similar character warehouse, distribution and office space, the property located at 30 King Road in an LI district.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. That's approved for the special use permit? So for seeker, as far as the preliminary site plan approval, we did a coordinated review on that, the long form, so I will go through the part two. Once I find it here. So there's 10 pages on the full assessment form. This is part two to identify potential project hazards. I'll go through each one of these that have, yes, as marked, based on all of the information we've received from all the various agencies that we have documentation from, as well as the form that has been completed by the applicant and the information obtained at a public hearing. We'll go through each one to determine, make a determination on seeker. So for the first one, the impact on land, proposed action may involve the construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site, that is yes. And then the subcategories for that, the proposed action may involve construction on land where the depth of water table is less than three feet. That is not indicated here based on the information to receive, so it'll be no or a small impact may occur. The proposed action may involve construction on slope of 15% or greater. Again, the information is less than 10%, so that would be no or a small impact may occur. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the existing ground surface. I think the closest was eight feet that I read, so that will also be no or a small impact may occur. Proposed action may involve the excavation, the removal of more than 1,000 tons of material. That was not indicated either on here, so that would be no or a small impact may occur. Proposed action may involve the construction of, continues more than one year or in multiple phases. I think you phased this out, but you continued, do you plan on constructing this once one phase is done, and the second phase and the third phase, so it will be multiple years, correct?
Yeah.
Do you know what the duration will be?
It's really on the demand that you see.
Okay, but it won't, it won't be a continuous construction for greater than that period. So you'll, you'll, you'll start construction, you'll finish, and then as the demand occurs, then you'll start construction again and finish?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right, so I believe that would be a small impact that may occur as a result of continuous construction cycles. The proposed action may result in the increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including the treatment of herbicides that has already been grubbed out. So there'd be no or small impact that may occur as a result of that. And then the proposed action is located within a coastal erosion hazard area, which it is, it is not, based on impacts on land. I didn't see any other impacts. Did anybody else see any other impacts? Impact on geological features, number two. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of access terrain, unique unusual landforms such as cliffs, dunes, fossils, caves, minerals, and the answer to that was no. So we'll skip that and move to the impacts on water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds or lakes. The answer to that was yes. The proposed action may create a new water body, which there's no or small impact or any other water bodies that will be created other than the stormwater retention and bio retention areas. The proposed action may result in the increase or decrease of over 10% or more than a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water, which will not be impacted, so that will be no. The proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of materials from a wetland or a water body, which there will be no dredging, so that would be no. Proposed action may involve the construction within adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in a bed of banks or other water body, which it will not, so that would be no. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, either from upland erosion, runoff or disturbance from bottom sediments, which it will not, so that would be no. The proposed action may include construction of more and more intake or withdrawal from surface water, which you have none planned, you'll be using public water, so that is The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls from discharge of wastewater to service water. That will be no, you'll also be connected to county pure waters. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or the degradation of receiving water bodies. Again, that would be a no or a small impact through your SWIP, which will be protecting the land during construction process. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within downstream. Aside from the proposed action, there are none, so that will be no. The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in any water body, which is no. If you did, you would have to get a DEC permit, obviously, on a one, on a time by time basis if you decided to do that. The proposed action may require the construction of new or the expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, which the county has indicated it would not. And I do not see any other impacts or any other impacts that anybody sees in that particular area. If not, we'll move on to question four, the impact on groundwater. The answer to that, based on all the information received, was no. This is water wells and et cetera that would be used other than domestic water. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in the development of land subject to flooding, that is yes. There is a, proposed action may result in development of a designated floodway, that is not indicated based on the engineering, so there's no or a small impact may occur. The proposed impact may result in the development within a 100-year flood plain, which it is not, so that is no or a small impact. The proposed action may result in the development within a 500-year flood plain, which it is not, so that is no or a small impact. The proposed action may result in or require modifications of existing drainage patterns, that is no or a small impact you're providing for stormwater removal through your engineering drugs. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding, that is not relevant, so that is no or a small impact. There's a dam located on the site of the proposed action. Is the dam in need of repair or an upgrade, and there's obviously no dam on this location, so that is no or a small impact. Any other impacts that anybody can see? Okay. The impacts on air, the proposed action may include state regulated air emission source. The answer to that is no, so we won't go through all of the questions on six. The implant, or the impact on plants and animals, that is also, was responded to as no. That's relative. to as no, um, that's relative to flora and fauna and the impact on animals. The impact on agricultural resources, proposed action may impact agricultural resources, I believe this is also no, but there was one indication on there, so mark this as yes and we'll go through it. The proposed action, uh, may impact soil classification within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System, did not see that, so that's no or a small impact. The impact, the proposed action may sever, cross, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land, including cropland, hayfields, pasture, vineyards, orchards, which is not applicable, so that is no. The proposed action may result in the excavation or the compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land, which this is not, so that is no. The proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than two and a half acres if located in agricultural, in an agricultural district, more than 10 acres if not in an agricultural district, and that is also no. The proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system, which it is not, so that is no. The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in an increased development of potential or pressure, or pressure on farmland, which is no in this area. The proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan, which does not apply, so that is also no in this area. The other one is the impact on aesthetic resources, and there are no, um, impacts on aesthetic resources, this is, um, relative to, um, areas that have significant value for viewing, uh, which this area doesn't have any natural resources that people use for viewing. The impact on historical or archaeological resources, um, that was, came back as no as well, that was question number 10. Impact on recre, open space in recreational areas, this proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resources as designated by an adopted municipal open space, space plan, that is also not applicable, so that is no. The impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, this is not a critical environment area, so that is also no. The impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in the change in the existing transportation systems, that was marked yes, um, so we'll go through those, those additional questions. Projected traffic increase may exceed the capacity of the existing road, um, there was no or a small impact will occur. The proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for 500 or more vehicles, uh, that is no. The proposed action will degrade existing transit access, uh, that was no, or there would be a small impact. The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations, there will be no impact to that, they're not going to be impacting anything along the roadway. Proposed action may alter or present pattern of movement of people or goods, uh, which is also not app, applicable, no or a small impact may occur. Any other impacts that anybody could see on transportation? Impact on energy, proposed action may cause or increase the use of any form of energy, which is yes, proposed action will require a new or upgrade to existing substation, uh, that is no, that will not be required, based on the information we've received. Proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single or two-family residents, or to serve a commercial or industrial use, that is no or a minor impact, based on the information provided. The proposed action will utilize more than 2,500 megawatt hours per year of electricity, that was also indicated as no, they're substantially below that or a small impact. The proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed, and that is also no. Any other impacts that anybody could think of on the impact of energy? Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase of noise orders or outdoor lighting, and that is yes. Uh, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation, uh, that is no or a minor impact, we do have a, a regulation on that. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home, you're not going to be blowing anything upright. Okay? Proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, uh, that is no or a small impact, based just on vehicle emissions. Proposed action may result in lights shining onto adjoining properties, all your lights are dark sky compliant and they're wall packs, so that is no or a small impact. Proposed action may result in shining, or I'm sorry, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, and again, uh, that is a no with your dark sky lighting. Impact on human health, uh, the proposed action may have impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contamination, uh, that was no. Consistency, consistency with community plans, um, the proposed action is not consistent with adapted land use plans, it is, so that question to that is no. Consistency with community character, proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, that is also no. And that concludes those questions. Any other impacts or any other statement relative to seeker? So then, and for the determination of significance, based on evidence and information presented in this meeting, determinant, determines the application to be a type one action, the planning board will, or I'm sorry, the, as far as seeker, based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, that determineate the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. I also vote yes on that. Did you want me to read that again? So then, for the application for the preliminary, uh, site plan approval, did you need me to read each of those, or, you know, let me read them, because I don't think I've gone through all of them. For landscaping, are you going to provide 1% of the total project cost, or are you going to landscape the area that would be equal to 1% of the total project cost?
We have provided landscaping along the entrance and the front areas of all the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, since we have so much existing vegetation that we're leaving, we might not reach that 1% number, you know, we are, well, we've added enough, we, that we feel we can, that we're beefing up the property, but we may be going to that 1% number, so.
All right, then what I will do is, I'll make the condition relative to completing that, and if it does not complete the 1%-
Yeah, sure.
The building department will be asking you for that. So the conditions of approval, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance of the approved landscape plan. Approval is subject to final approval of the town engineer and the commissioner of public works. The town engineer and the commissioner of public works shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicants shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Paul, do we require a stormwater control facility management on this, or Mike, did you indicate that? Do we have to do a stormwater control facility, facility management agreement with the town for, for this? I did, we do? Okay. The town will require the applicant to enter into a stormwater control facility management agreement with the town and to provide access easement to the town, the access easements and the SWC FMA will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the planning board attorney, and then filed at the Monroe County Clerk's Office prior to signing of the Mylars. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all, uh, or no storage of outside naxus materials, uh, delineation for the location of outside storage of materials near the buildings, no outside major vehicle repair other than maintenance-type activity, no storage or disposal of construction debris on site, outside storage of construction materials will not exceed 12 feet in height. With those conditions, the application of King Park 2022 LLC, PO Box 170 North Charlie, New York 14514, Andrew Vieira, PO Box 170 North Charlie, New York 14514, owner, for a preliminary site plan approval to construct eight commercial buildings to be leasable spaces at the property located at 30 King Road in the L.I. district.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. For your final, I believe we'll be requiring that agreement on how you're going to deal with the forest main, who's going to own it, who's going to maintain it, and then provision to, from the railroad, to go underneath those railroad tracks, because that, if you don't get that, that could, that could substantially change how you're going to manage all of that, so, um, you come back in for final, if you could add the items that we have on the condition for the storage, where you intend, where to show that it will fit at each of those buildings.
Okay.
And then who is going to be owning and maintaining the forest main, as well as where it's going to go and where it's going to ultimately be?
So that, that's a big issue, yeah?
Right.
Which, we're comfortable, we can get that worked out, but-
I'm sure you can, but, um, so you have preliminary site plan approval at this point, we'll just be waiting for those items to be cleaned up, and then you'll be able to come back for final.
Okay.
Thank you. Man. For our discussion item, application of Bruce Blankenship, 36 Tempest Street, Perry, New York 14530, applicant, Srevin and Nadine Arnt, 48 Colby Street, Spenceport, New York 14559, owner, for a preliminary site plan to construct a 4,368 square foot building, property located at 3504 Union Street in the G.I. district.
Good evening, I'm Bruce Blankenship, uh, with Morton Buildings. Coming, uh, before you tonight, uh, our eventual, uh, pursuit is to get a building permit, to build a storage facility for the Arnt's. I want to make a little correction, uh, it's actually Nadine and Jason on there, little typo. We like the name, actually, it's, it's, it's pretty bold. So, the, the Arnt's have been working out of their residence for over 20 years in the heating and cooling business, um, there's a lot of pieces and parts these days, um, you know, just things that you have to keep in stock, uh, of course, people call them when they're needed, and they need to have parts to be able to service the community. Uh, so, they want to be able to have more storage, uh, be able to have their garage back at their residence, and this is going to be just storage, uh, they do, uh, want to, you know, expand the business, and so they want to be able to have more stock, uh, and so that's the purpose for this building. The survey, uh, that I believe you have a copy of, uh, currently, to the north side of the property, uh, there is an existing driveway, that driveway goes past the, uh, one-story frame houses, it's labeled on the survey, and it actually extends back into this property. So the, the building itself is less than 20% of an acre, and it's, they're really not disturbing anything back there, uh, if anything, they're, they've actually cleaned it up considerably, uh, there was debris from, I don't know where, construction of other properties on either side of them over the years, uh, that they've actually cleaned up. This property has actually had natural flow of water, uh, that actually goes back, uh, that would actually be the, uh, east end of the property. We are asking to stay off from the south property line, uh, 10 feet, uh, and that is correct from the back, uh, of the east property, that's 45 feet, and then they would like to have the 48-foot, uh, on the north side. The two homes that are shown on the survey, they own, and, uh, they're not looking to demolish or take those down, um, so this, this building doesn't have any road frontage to speak of. Their business, as far as for the building, uh, you know, a tremendous amount of anything that they would be taking out of a home, appliances, things like that, gets recycled, um, so it would basically be carry-in, carry-out type of thing. We don't see any environmental impact with this building, um, as far as it goes, it, it seems like a pretty simple thing. I approached the building department, uh, with the intent to get a building permit, and, uh, was advised that I would need, um, some sort of, uh, engineer to engineer the site, but, I mean, we, we don't believe it's applicable due to the building not being very large, it's not going to be used for any retail space, there's not going to be public in the building, it's just 100% for storage, so there's no retail space. So as far as it goes, you know, we're looking, as I said, to, to move forward, to be able to obtain a building permit, so they can, you know, be able to service the community, uh, you know, have the stock to, to be able to help people, uh, that are in need of, of keeping, keeping warm. Open it up for any questions?
No storage outside of the building, everything is within the building?
Yeah, it's good size, so they're, they're not going to need to put anything on the outside of this building.
No water service, sanitary, two inches power?
At, at this, at this point, we're only looking to put electric in the building.
No office space, just storage?
At, at this point, that's, that's the use of the building, it's just storage.
Read somewhere, you were going to use one of the house structures for office space?
Um, they're considering that, um, it's still, it's still something that's, that's tabled.
Presently, anybody living in these homes?
Yes, there is.
So they're both occupied?
Yes, they are.
So, so it's, the zoning is general industrial, is that right?
Yes.
It's being used as residential currently? How's that work? Do they need a variance?
What?
Do they need a variance to put residential, have residential, what, rentals?
Land use variance.
Yeah.
The, the rental properties have been there, as you can imagine, for well before any type of town codes were in place.
Doesn't matter.
I mean, anything that we got to do to obviously make this happen, we're, we're willing to cooperate.
Guessing an engineer drawing would be a good start.
Yeah, I guess I, the zoning was my question too, like, how does that, how does that work? Obviously, the pre-existing structures on the site and the use of those structures, I guess we're hitting on all that itself.
The minute they put the barn up and they use it for storage, it's, it conforms to the G.I., and the use of residences as rental properties would cease, or they could try for a land use variance.
So, that's what we'd have to do, they, they don't want to force anybody out onto the street, uh, you know, there are people that have rented there for extremely long period of time, uh, so we definitely don't want to put anybody out on the street.
No variance is required for this, Paul? Side setbacks, rear setback in this area?
I think they may require, you mean, over a side setback?
Yeah, for a side-
The 10-foot side?
Lots of them.
Okay, all right.
Side, side your setback of 35 feet of the G.I. zone.
So they need one for the south property line.
Okay.
Is the zoning to the south G.I. as well? Do we know? It is?
Okay.
All G.I. on that side of the street, as far as I know.
And this was put on for discussion only tonight, correct?
Correct.
It'll be coming back next month.
Be back.
Got it? Okay. All right.
Also looks like the driveway to the two-story house goes onto the next property.
Do they own the entire piece of land, the entire parcel of land and, and all the buildings that are currently on it?
Correct.
It's not like they're alone up there. They've done a lot of strange things with those lots over the years up there with that.
Storage facility there now, isn't there?
Yeah, there's that guy that repairs those forklifts or.
Yeah, he's just to the north.
He's the neighbor to the north.
His truck rental was in there for U-Haul or whoever.
To, to the, to the south, that's a vacant, that's a vacant lot. I understand that there, there's going to be some sort of storage in there at some point.
Yeah, there were, stories, you know.
Two years ago or something like that.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The open, Jason and I are the ones that owns the property. The open lot that's directly to the south at one point was actually the same piece of property, but the people that owned the property that I now own lost it through a bank foreclosure, and the bank had cut the property in half, which is why there's that open lot. And when I went to go buy the property, I didn't want to give the bank money for a lot that I had no reason to want at all.
Your name again, sir, for the record?
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record?
Jason Arnt.
Thank you.
Yes.
That was the property?
This is actually over on this property?
Oh. Yeah, but a bank wouldn't smoke the lot property, that's what I don't understand.
Well, maybe it would have been this, maybe what he's saying is this was the same owner. They lost it, the bank sold them separately, now it's two different owners. That's probably what he's, yeah, I mean, they didn't subdivide, the bank didn't subdivide it.
Okay, no, I, I'm just trying to follow what you were saying, so in terms that I understand, yes, the best way to put it, so.
Stone driveway, paved driveway?
Uh, stone.
The building would be stone?
I requested to be able to stone the lot, and we've actually done that.
Okay. And then the, I see the dumpsters around back, the doors that you show, the elevations, they were on the, that would be to the north then, right?
Correct.
The front would have that, the front-facing Union Street would have that overhang that makes it look like a patio or a porch, right?
Yeah, it's just a little, basically, something to stay out of the weather when you're trying to get in the front door.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions before they come back for preliminary and final?
Just to see it, to scale, I think is going to be helpful.
A drawing, an engineer drawing of scale?
Yeah.
Square feet is it?
Forty-six, thirty?
Forty-three, sixty-eight.
Forty-three, sixty-eight. Slab concrete on the inside?
Mm-hmm.
Downspouts?
Yep.
Out into the stone?
Yep.
Gravel? Okay.
No.
Only no water?
Excuse me?
Simply, simply electric, no water?
Correct.
For heat and lights? Okay. Anything else?
No office in the building?
Not this time.
Anything else for them to have before they come back? So you'll work with the building department on everything that is needed to come back for preliminary approval, correct?
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
So make sure, so when you come back, you have everything, we don't have to.
What are the overall dimensions on this building?
It's 42 by 104.
Paul, has everything been provided as far as what they need for preliminary?
Engineer drawing, right? Because you're going to want to know the size of the pipe, the French drains, how they work, the size of the pit.
Well, are, are we going to, are we going to need water retention? Because it, the size of the building, we don't believe is applicable to having water retention.
It's going to be up to Michael Hanscom's review. Yeah. Our engineer will review the.
To use handle the way you want.
At this point, the, the property drains naturally to the back, and we didn't disturb any of that when we were putting in gravel, so.
So at this point, the gravel is in, the French drains are in, and everything drains to the back?
No, no, but when I was told up front, I was told that I was going to need water retention. I didn't, I, I didn't feel strongly at that point that it was necessary, and I, I still don't feel that it's necessary. So we're just really requesting to put the building in, and we'll conform with downspouts and gutters and, and let the water naturally drain as it should. They, they have four employees, so we're, they're not, and, and that's including the two that we have in here.
No, the concern is you, we have to be able to show that the runoff from the property will not leave the property, right? So you're going to be managing the water on your property, can't run off to the neighbors on either side?
Correct.
Out into the road in front.
Yep.
So that's, when we say an engineer drawing, something that would have an elevation to show us that, what are the elevations to show that it is sloping, in fact, to the back, and where is it going from there?
Okay.
So where is it already, what's it doing right now?
It, it's actually going back to the back, that would be the east bottom corner is where the water's running.
All right. And I assume the size of the building, Paul, is what's triggered the, for the preliminary site plan, which has triggered the engineering piece, correct? Paul?
Just a minute.
Brings up another fact, though, is if he's got employees working in there, was a, is there a toilet room in this site?
It, it's just for storage. They're not, they, they work in people's homes.
Those people won't actually be stationed in that building at any given time.
It, it's just strictly to put their, their parts in, their furnaces, AC units. They are, they are planning on putting their two van bodies in there. That's one reason for getting the storage. They're not planning on doing any automotive, no rebuilding engines.
So they'll, so the employees will drive their cars to the building, leave them, take the, take the vehicles, work for the day, come back, take their cars and leave?
Yep.
All right. So is there space to, again, that's, that's the kind of things we would need on your drawing to show. Where is the parking going to be? Where's the water going to go when it drains off the building and off the property to make sure it stays on your property, doesn't drain onto the neighbor's property?
Okay.
So when we say an engineer drawing, an engineer drawing would have that?
Mm-hmm.
Would show the elevations, and it would show that the water's not going to flow uphill onto the neighbor's property, that type of thing?
Gotcha.
If you need further detail on that, we'd be certainly glad to give that to you. Paul's already given.
Paul's been, been very informative. He's, he's a great guy.
That Paul?
Agree.
No, I'm talking about.
I go on record for saying that.
Sorry, Paul.
Wow.
Love you, man.
Special provisions applying to the GI District, all construction new uses or change in use in the GI District shall be subject to site plan approval by the planning board in accordance with the procedures established under the form.
Right.
Thus kicking in by, you are here tonight to get feedback from them, so you can generate drawings from back in January and stand before them to get preliminary and final site.
Okay. And the drawings would have to be just nuts?
I have to follow the codes.
Right. We're not talking about the drawings like we have that are just sketched. An engineer would draw to show that these are the actual and true dimensions.
It needs to be designed.
Right, designed for the, for the site, site plan design.
Sure, well, that's why we're here tonight. I just want to clarify that we're not going to need any water retention.
Again, I don't know without, he, he would have, our engineer would have to get the plan and then look at that and let you know that.
Probably not, because they're not disturbing that big of a way.
Yeah.
But you want to do a survey or go out there and do a topographical survey of the lot, so we can show the contours, the contours will then show where the water's going and what kind of changes you want to make for the drainage in order to be able to install the building.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, the engineer then will design the French drains, the size of them, the depth, the size of the pipes, if you're going back, are you going back to drywall or that?
Well, that's what I'm trying to eliminate right now. That's what I'm trying to clarify, that they can just have natural water flow as the property does now.
Your engineer's going to have to. Depends on where it's going right now. Right? You're putting a building on there now, so if right now it's flowing onto all the neighbor's property and you're putting a building there, you're going to have to, you're going to have to mitigate that by keeping the property, the water on your property.
Right.
Whether or not you need, I think the question is whether or not you need a pond is what you're asking?
Right.
I think that's hard to know without knowing how much water there is and where it's going. That's what Mike's talking about, by having somebody say, based on the land in the area and how much water runoff you're going to have on your, from your building, right? Because that's all going to run off to one spot.
All right.
The size of the piping that you would need in order to drain that away.
No, I understand that completely. I was just, based on the neighborhood that's around where we want to put this building, the neighbors, I don't see any water retention in any of the commercial buildings in that area.
Right, and when each of those buildings come in, they do the same thing to make sure water isn't going onto your property.
Right.
So that's what we're seeing here as an engineer drawing to show that that's not going to happen.
Right, right, well, I, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but they're, they're definitely out in that area, there's, there's some water running on other neighbors, but I understand what you guys need from me, and we're willing to provide that and come back and see you next month.
The purpose of tonight's meeting is so you don't have to come back and then come back again, come back again, is to give you whatever you need, and if you have any other questions, if you're not clear, to make sure you contact Paul, so when you come back, we can move forward with it at a public hearing.
Perfect.
All right. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so can I request to come back in January?
Oh, yes, we're not going to, yes, we could just put you on the, put you on the agenda for January 9th, I think it is? Is that right, Paul?
Yeah, January 9th. What do we have to submit?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's got to make a submission.
There's submission dates you have to have, so.
So. That's tomorrow. I'll see you in February.
Tomorrow for, for Fe, for January?
If not, if not.
He's got some work to do. It's two weeks from now, wouldn't it be?
No. Last Wednesday was the planning board deadline for January, so I would see you in February. Your deadline in January is the 3rd, that's your submission deadline.
So January 3rd is the submission deadline for the meeting on the 9th?
No, January 3rd is the submission deadline for the meeting on February 3rd.
Got it, okay.
That is his first available.
Is it possible for me to make a request, due to the, this isn't, seem very complex, to be able to get that information submitted by XYZ date to be able to come in January?
I have to send it to the county, I need 30 days to get it to the county.
County has to provide comments, which you heard earlier tonight, we teed it, too, because the county couldn't get their comments in, so those comments have to be in before we can move forward.
Okay.
So, and then we also have to have a timeline to be able to make notice to the public that there will be a public hearing on this, so people can come to comment on it. So that's why all these dates are very specific and very clear.
I understand.
Perfect. Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes for the month of?
No, no meeting minutes, no meeting.
No, 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 no.
What about the other?
We had October meeting minutes, yeah, so I'll make a motion for the meeting minutes in October.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, so there's been, no meeting in November, there's no outstanding business, right, Sandra?